Are we looking in the camera?
Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Delmar, together with my co-host, Mark Ronitav, statewide news service, JBSTech.com, and now columnist for the Jewish Press.
Yes, and I'm having a lot of fun doing all of that. And I talk about in my column about how government relates to the Jewish community or doesn't, as the case may be. But speaking of government, we have with us a Common Council member, relatively new, Dorsey Athlers. And thank you for coming, welcome to The Jewish View.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Rabbi. Had it me.
And I have to tell you, I did research on your background, and you have an impressive background for someone as young as you.
Thank you.
So I'm really, you're already a doctor.
Yes.
You already have your doctorate. This is, tell us about your background. Tell us, you know, what you do, what your calling is.
Sure. So my expertise is in public health. And how I started in the field of public health, I knew at a very early age that I had an interest in community issues. And I grew up in Washington DC in the early 80s, and it was during the HIV/AIDS epidemic. And so, at a young age, I saw family members and friends dying from HIV. And so I decided that I wanted to get involved, and that I wanted to prevent other people from experiencing some of the loss that I did due to the virus. And so I made that commitment at a young age, and said that I was going to devote myself to improving the lives of people in various communities. And so, that's what initially prompted me to get involved in public health, which is a field devoted to helping communities and helping people.
And you went to University of Albany?
I did, and that's how I ended up in Albany.
And that's my alumni, and that's how I ended up in Albany. I grew up in Brooklyn, so, you know, so we both ended up in Albany through the same college, and a few years apart, I would tell you.
Okay.
I was graduating when you were born. But anyhow, you were, but you've done a lot. I mean, you know, with Excelsior College, you were on the faculty, you know, you've been involved in different community organizations, like In Our Own Voices, and you were even profiled on the U- Albany Magazine.
Yeah.
I never got profiled in the magazine.
Well, now you have to be the host of The Jewish View over here.
You gotta tell me how I can do this, okay?
I will, I will.
But they wrote a really nice spotlight on you, the graduate from 1974, Vinnie Rita.
Yeah.
You know, so, and they call you a true gem, so, you know, what else? And they're not gonna say anything, you know, this is a magazine that's promotion for the university, so they're not gonna say anything negative at all.
But it's true.
Thankfully.
They had something negative to say they weren't.
I wanted to ask you a question. You said, you mentioned the idea that, of, you know, that turned you onto public health was the AIDS epidemic, and, you know, and really, we had a lot of press coverage, like, oh, it's terrible, it's rampant. And really, for a number of years, you don't hear anything about it. I don't know if it just found a cure, or there's not a problem anymore. No, it's not in the press, I know just because it's not in the press, even though it could have been Mark over here, but, you know, just sometimes you don't know about it, doesn't mean the issue is solved. But still, what is the issue nowadays? Is it downward spiral? I mean, people are more educated about and protecting themselves?
There, it is still an issue. And I think because we don't see it as much in the news, people fail to realize that there are people still dying from HIV/AIDS related complications. People are still contracting the virus from drug use and engaging in risky behaviors, like having unprotected sex. And we're seeing that some populations are impacted more. So for example, within communities of color, in particular African-American communities, Latino communities, we're seeing higher rates of HIV infection, and also among the LGBT community, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender community.
Is that because of the lack of education? I mean, people are not being told how to protect themselves, that's what I'm saying?
Um, I believe it's, in some cases, it may be lack of education, but also, we have new treatments such as PREP, which is pre-exposure prophylaxis, which is a treatment that one can take prior to engaging in a risky behavior, and it reduces the risk of contracting HIV. So some people say, if I contract the virus, look at Magic Johnson, he has it, he's living longer, he's healthy, so some people think, oh, it's not a big deal. And others think, well, we-
Well, it's not a death sentence.
Correct, it's not a death sentence, I can still live my life. And others are saying, we have some of these preventative drug treatments, and so I can engage in certain behaviors and not have any negative consequences.
Yeah, it's interesting, but still an issue.
It is still very much an issue.
Again, just because the press doesn't say anything about it.
And it's not just an issue in the gay community, it's an issue in the heterosexual community, in the straight community, because they feel that, you know, they would pass it on. Now, I gotta tell you, Jerry Nadler, who's a congressman, told me this about the Orthodox Jewish community in Crown Heights specifically, is that it's a, you know, that people feel so regimented within the observant Jewish community, that they want to get out and they want to cheat. And so they go out and they find a prostitute, or they find HIV, and they contract HIV, and then they come home and they don't say anything, and then they spread it to their spouse. And it's really been a hidden crisis in Crown Heights.
It's interesting, I didn't even know that was-
And people have not been talking about it, because they, you know, they've tried to get counseling sessions, and, you know, the rabbis just don't want to deal with it. You know, so that's been really-
It's interesting, so really, the education is important to get it out there.
Huge.
Absolutely, and there's one other point I will make, we're seeing an influx in heroin in our suburban communities. And one of the issues in the 80s was HIV was spreading because of drug users sharing needles. And so that's something that we also need to be mindful of, as we're addressing this heroin epidemic that we're dealing with. Currently, individuals sharing needles, and as a result, there's the risk of contracting, yep, conditions like HIV.
So it's important to get it out to the people, to know that, you know, don't, you know, deal with risky behavior, you have to, you know, be sure that you're protected in any way.
Yes, right.
Well, we don't want to spend the whole show on this.
All right, so let's go on.
No, no, I will tell you a quick story that I did. I've been following this issue since 1982, when it first broke. And I did one of the first stories about HIV, and the, and, you know, this is when they had, I opened up my piece by saying, this is an epidemic that has affected people of the 4-H Club, not the Agricultural Society, but homosexuals, Haitians, heroin abusers, and hemophiliacs. So, those are the 4-H Club. Well, did I hear from the Agricultural Society, even though I said that it's not, they want to make sure I knew that 4-H meant head, health, heart, and hands, you know, so. But they, you know, but I did try to drive that home, and you're right, heroin abusers was one of the 4-H. So I just wanted to, you know, recollect, and it just drew back a memory, you know, and it's, you know-
It's important to get the word out, to educate people, that's what we're here for.
Right.
So, tell us, what drove you to become a member of the Common Council? At least, you know, I mean, Dominic Casalaro was your predecessor, and-
Yes.
You know, he kind of took a liking to you, I guess, because he kind of promoted you to be his successor. So tell us about all that, and how that happened.
So I returned to SUNY Albany to complete my doctorate after working in the field of HIV/AIDS. And I realized at that point, that in order to be effective, I needed to have a better understanding of policy. I was in the trenches doing programming, and realized that I needed to broaden my scope. And so I returned for my doctorate and focused on policy, and ended up learning about the Center for Women in Government and Civil Society, Women in Public Policy Fellowship. And that fellowship changed my life. I was exposed to women leaders in public policy, who were promoting young women like myself, to get involved in the decision-making roles. And so as a result of being a part of that fellowship, I was introduced to leaders like Mayor Kathy Sheen. At the time, she was not the mayor.
She was treasurer.
She was city treasurer, President Carolyn McLaughlin. And at that time, President McLaughlin was planning to run for an Assembly seat, and I asked if I could volunteer on her campaign to get some experience. First time ever working on a political campaign, didn't know what I was doing.
Or getting into.
Or getting into. And she took a chance and gave me that opportunity. It was because of that, I ended up meeting some community members, like Judith Maza, who recognized me and recognized my work, and I was eventually asked if I would run for office, and-
Asked by whom?
Judith Maza and Dominic Casalaro.
Oh, okay.
Who approached me and asked if I would be interested.
And Judith is the ward leader or something?
Judith Maza, she currently sits on our, on the Second Avenue Neighborhood Association. She's been very active in local politics here in Albany, and-
Okay, I probably know her by face, but not by-
I'm sure you would. And so they both approached me, and at that time, I have to be honest and say, I was curious as to why they would be approaching me to run for office. And eventually, I said yes, after praying and speaking to family members, I made the decision to run, so that's how I ended up running for office.
Well, prayer does a lot.
Yes.
And, so what, so is it the dream job for you, being a Common Council member? I mean, is it something, is it what you had expected so far?
Well, honestly, I didn't know what to expect. I was new to Albany politics, I had some people say, are you crazy? Are you-
And you didn't know why?
I didn't know why they were asking me that question.
Now you know.
I do have a better understanding of what they meant by that, but it is one of the jobs that I feel most fulfilled, because you have the opportunity to make a tangible difference in people's lives. And so that's what I enjoy most about being a Common Council member. You do have to deal with the politics that come with the job, but in general, the ability to make decisions that impact people's lives is what's important to me. And I'm able to, as I started out saying, as a young girl wanting to make a difference in communities, I'm able to do that in this role.
Well, I got to, I've been very impressed with your work on the Common Council, so-
Thank you.
I gotta tell you, I think that, you know, you don't, while you're a fan of Kathy Sheen, you don't always toe the line with the mayor, but most of the time, you do. I mean, let's fit, right? Is that, you know?
Well, it depends on what you say toe the line and I-
No.
And that has been a comment, I often get quoted in the papers, being, oh, Dorsey Pleer is Kathy Sheen's ally. And I do have a lot of respect for the mayor, I think that she's doing a great job as a mayor. And I would have to say that many of the policies that she has put forward, I have supported, not just for the sake of toeing the line, but more so, I've had the opportunity to critically think about the policies, discuss it with my constituents, and do my own research, and then make a decision from there.
Okay, that's good, that's fair. But it's, so it just happens that, after you do your research, and after you do, you talk to your constituents, that it just happens to fall in line with the mayor, so the mayor seems to be in tune with your district, basically, on major issues?
On most issues. I would say that there have been some, you know, issues, like for example, the red light, red light camera legislation, where there was some community members who supported it, and there were some of my constituents who said, we don't want it. So there have been some contentious issues.
Do you have any red lights in your district, any red cameras?
We do.
You do, where?
We do have one at the intersection of Frisbee and Second.
Oh, okay.
And to date, I've received some positive feedback from residents, because we found that there were a lot of cars speeding through that community, running the red light, so we've seen some calming as a result.
You know, talk about your district specifically, you're the common, Mark don't go speeding. But, you know, just, you know, talk about specifically your area, where you are, obviously you all care about the whole Albany city, but your area, you know, the special needs of your area that you're concerned with.
What I appreciate about the First Ward, it's a very diverse ward.
Just maybe, we'll just give a few boundaries for our viewers. I don't know myself where the First Ward is.
Sure, so we, in the First Ward, we have some parts of the South End, so South Pearl, the Ezra Prentice Community is a part of the First Ward. We also have some parts of Whitehall Road, going out towards the Norman Scale Bridge. I have some parts of Delaware Avenue, and so it's, I share Second Avenue with Council Member Corningate on the Second Ward, and Council Member Kathy Fahey. So we share the Second Ward, but also have, I'm sorry, we share the, share Second Avenue. So I have Second Avenue, South Pearl, McCarty Avenue, some parts of Whitehall Road.
Excellent.
Pretty large ward.
And how far up Whitehall do you go?
A little past Ash, up to Holmes Court.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So you have quite a few neighborhood associations in your district.
I do.
That's really a diverse, that's what I was gonna just say, it was a very diverse area.
Very diverse, so I have the Delaware Avenue Neighborhood Association, the Second Avenue Neighborhood Association, the South End Neighborhood Association, the Mount Hope Neighborhood Association, and then the Ezra Prentice Tenants Association.
And the Whitehall Neighborhood Watch.
And the Whitehall Neighborhood Watch would be a part of that.
Right, which is what I'm a part of, is, you come probably a half mile from my house.
Oh, okay.
So, that's, I think it's, anyway, so anyway, that's why you're very over there.
There are any specific needs in that area, but it's very hard, like we just said, it's so diverse, so.
There are, one of the major issues, when I think about the South End community, is the oil trains.
That's what I was gonna bring up, is the oil train, because I gotta, really-
Mark's always, we have so many different government officials.
I've been on this issue, and I gotta tell you, with all due respect, I don't know, I mean, I haven't heard much about it now, but I don't know why there's such an uproar about this, when there's a simple solution. And you hear, you hear about billions of dollars being spent for Second Avenue subway, for the Tappan Zee Bridge, for new train, new tunnel from New York to New Jersey. I mean, there's so much money spent on infrastructure, and it's some of it, half it's federal money. Now, I know that the trains are federal property, and the Ezra Prentice Apartments is a federal housing project. So you'd think that some brainiac in the federal government said, hey, we've got houses, we've got trains, this is a good, right? It's a good combination, but it's not.
Yes, sir.
So, here's what they should do. You know how you have on the highway, oh, the sound barriers?
Yes.
And they look pretty, they look nice. They should put sound barriers, or they should put fire retardant or fireproof barriers on, you know, between the housing and the trains. And they do have doors throughout the wall that you can gain access, but if there's a fire or an explosion, it's gonna be, you're gonna have some time to escape, if you're in the housing project, and you're gonna be able to contain the fire on the other side of the wall. And for, you know, everyone says, oh, it's the cost, it's the cost. Well, the federal government doesn't seem to have a problem spending money on bridges, and tunnels, and subways. Why not spend money what saves lives?
Well, I'm glad you bring that up, because-
And it's federal money, so I'm not saying the city should spend anything.
Well, like I said, I'm glad you bring that up, because one of the things the community has been advocating for is a sound wall, wall that you're speaking of, because in addition to some of the issues that you raise, also noise is a public health issue, and residents at Ezra Prentice talk about constantly hearing the clanking of trains, the clanking of the tracks, and so it's, noise is also a major issue too.
But if they're going to put a noise barrier up, they should already invest more in it and do it as a fire retardant or a fire resistant wall.
So, something that's-
Okay, that's what should be brought up.
Something that's comprehensive and that protects residents. The issue, as you said, has been the cost, and as city officials, myself and Council Member Corningate, we have been working with the community, trying to advocate, to find funding for this wall that needs to be placed up, as an immediate solution to the problem.
You shouldn't need to find the funding, you should be going to the US Senators and Congressman Tonko, and let them find the money. It's their bailiwick. And meet with the people at the, you know, who, in the federal government who deal with the trains. I think it's Joe Boardman who might be in charge, and he used to be a state official here. So I think that's some New York connection for you. So I think there's some way that you could really do an impact, or make an impact, and take a trip to Washington, and show people, we mean business.
Yeah, and I will say Congressman Tonko has been very vocal about his concern about this, and so, something I can definitely follow up with him on.
I'm here to give ideas.
Because the city should not have to pay for the wall.
No, and, you know, except if Donald Trump wants to do it, you know, because he's good at building walls, he knows how to build walls, you know, so, anyway.
He won't touch that one.
No, I'm fine. We make jokes here, if I wanted to be a comedian, I'm sure a comedian could make a better, like, now, one of your public health issues is lupus. Is there a reason why lupus is in your framework? Why, is there a personal story, or?
Yes, actually.
So tell us what lupus is, again, just seeing, basically, for our viewers, and I don't know myself, so.
Okay. Lupus is a chronic condition, it's an autoimmune condition, so essentially, the body attacks itself, the immune system is attacking the major organs in the body. So the kidneys, even the brain.
And it affects a high level in the African-American community.
Correct. So, the ratio of this impact for women to men is nine to one, so we see that women are predominantly impacted by lupus, and also, women of African and Asian descent are disproportionately impacted by lupus. This is a condition that oftentimes falls under the radar, many people don't know about it.
I had a friend with lupus, yeah.
And women, anyone with it, they suffer in silence, because it really impacts your body. Individuals who have lupus are constantly fatigued. Some get to a point where they can't get out of bed, they're so chronically fatigued and tired. You also experience a lot of pain in your joints, and in some cases, the more detrimental cases are kidney failure. And so how I ended up becoming interested in this topic, my sister was diagnosed in her early twenties, in the prime of her career, just graduated from college, she started working, and one weekend she came home, and she had a rash on her face, which is also common among lupus patients, it's called a butterfly rash. And my mother sent her to the doctor, and we found out that she had lupus. And so as a family, we had not, we were not familiar with the condition. And so I, as a public health professional, and someone who was looking for a dissertation topic for my doctorate, I decided to focus on lupus, because it was something I was interested in, passionate about, and could gain information that would help a family member, but also help a lot of people who often don't even hear or know about the condition.
And where, and how many years ago was this?
This, at least 10 years ago.
At least 10 years ago, and is-
My sister's doing fine.
Fine, okay.
She has occasional flare-ups, which happens with lupus patients.
But do you take medicine, there is a cure or anything?
There's no cure, but there is treatment. Lupus patients often take corticosteroids, some form of steroids, which has its own side effects.
Makes you puffy and-
Makes you puffy, blow up, also there's some, some side effects that impact your emotions, your mood, so.
Don't get into that with women, huh?
Yeah, let's not go there.
I'm not going there either.
So, that's how I got interested in lupus.
Oh, so what's the, so, and is this your older sister?
This is my older sister.
Your older sister. How old are you?
I am 34.
34?
Yeah.
Pretty good, you did a lot for her.
You're not supposed to ask a woman her age.
Yeah, I know.
When you're a public official, yes, you get used to that.
But I don't mind sharing, I'm 34.
And I also-
To your advantage, you accomplish so much in your young age.
Yeah, and here's what I also ask, is how much does a Common Council member earn?
You're asking a lot of personal questions here, I heard.
That's public information.
That's public information.
So I think it's between $18,000 to maybe $20,000 a year.
You don't know.
It's between that number.
You don't know.
The exact number, I don't know.
They take off so much taxes over here.
That's what I'm saying, by the time you see, you know, what-
It's half as much over here.
Right, by the time the taxes come out of it, but I believe it's between $18,000 and $20,000.
You know, I asked, or I had, I had a question, asked to Dr. Zucker, who also has a second income with Health Resources Incorporated, HRI, and he says, oh, it's somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000, and I'm thinking, okay, you know, it doesn't mean enough to you to know exactly how much, it's just like extra money, you know?
No, to your point about the taxes being taken out.
I know, I'm just teasing, I just, I joke, I just.
I mean, but there's sometimes people, we've had, again, so many government officials on, I mean, on one hand, obviously, that's a salary for a part-time job, on the other hand, it consumes so much time.
Oh, yeah.
Then, you know, like, equating per hour, it probably comes out to $5 an hour, you know, like, by the time you're done.
Possibly, it's, I always tell people, it's a part-time position with full-time commitment, when you're doing it the right way.
That's right, you're absolutely right. And do you do newsletters and emails? Because I get emails from Judy Doschett, and from, you know, other council members. Do you do emails?
I do send out emails. I'm working on my newsletter now.
You are?
I am, but I do send out emails.
Well, I'll get you my email address, and you can add me to your list.
Okay.
I'd love to know what you're up to on a regular basis.
Okay.
So one of the, so I asked you about the Common Council, and, you know, how you're, you know, and if it's what you thought it would be. So while you didn't know what you were getting into going in, is this something that you feel like, yeah, I'm gonna stay here for another 20 years, and I'm gonna be like some, you know, Dan Herring, and Rich Conti, and Mike O'Brien, and others who are there for 20 years, it seems?
Well, me personally, I think that, and I'm learning with elected office, you need time to make an impact.
Yes.
But you also need to be mindful that, as you're in the role, making an impact, you should be grooming the next generation of leaders to take the post and the position. So do I anticipate being on the Common Council for an extended period of time? I would say no. I think that my constituents voted me in to get in, do a great job on their behalf, but at the same time, I think after a certain period of time, even with any job, after you've done it for a substantial amount of time, you can run the risk of tunnel vision and not being as effective. And so I think it's important, as I continue my tenure, I'm also thinking about who, who next in the community will be ideal to assume the position as well.
Well, Judy and Dominic made a great choice in you.
Thank you.
So I really, I'm glad that they did that, I hope you made a great choice for your successor.
Thank you.
Well, and also, they should go up, and, I mean, you're so capable, it seems, you should look higher a little bit, you know?
Well, now, this is a dangerous thing, because everyone's very sensitive about things, you know, whether it be for Assembly or Senate, you know, you have to be careful.
I didn't say what, I just-
No, but that's what's higher than, you know, maybe county legislator, but you gotta be careful when you, you know, talk about, Lucille McKnight's your county legislator, right?
Yes, she is.
And Pat Fahey's your assembly person.
Yes.
Neil Presland's your state senator.
Yep.
So, you know, you've got people who are entrenched, and, you know, so, I'm just-
Health Department also.
But you know, I'll tell you, in the, in the state legislature, there are more women, and more women of color now than ever before.
In the state?
In the Assembly.
In the Assembly.
State Assembly.
Yeah. And they made a big point of that, in the beginning of the session here.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, they were cheering, they were-
It's commendable.
You know, so, it is, yeah, but it just shows how people are, you know, it's not an old, it's not a men's club anymore, you know, so, you know. What, what would you like to, I mean, I know that, well, I should, you know, let the audience know that, you know, you are the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Public Access Channel that we're on now, but, so-
We have to say thank you for letting us be on the-
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So, what is your vision for public access and government access? You know, what would you like to see with the Ad-Hoc Committee?
Transparency is important, I think, in terms of any aspect of government, and this is all about public, we can't take public out of public access. And so transparency is very important, but also, I find with our new board, and thank you so much, Mark, for being a part of it, there is some new energy, and people are excited about what's to come with public access. And so my vision is consistent programming, programming that's of interest to our residents, and getting people excited about what's going on in our local government, more transparency with viewing meetings, and also more educational programming for our residents.
Just a quick question, what about the trash removal thing?
Taxes, trash taxes.
Did you, how do you stand on that?
So with the initial vote for the legislative, the trash fee, I voted no. There was a repeal that was recently put on the council floor for a vote, and unfortunately, I was unable to be there for the actual vote. But where I stand on this is, we have to, as a city, look more comprehensively at solid waste management.
How would you have voted for the repeal if you didn't have to step out or do something else? I don't know what you had to do.
So I was prepared to vote no to the repeal.
But then, but you voted no for the tax?
Correct, I voted no for the tax. And for the repeal, and I'll explain why I was in a position to vote no to the repeal, I feel at this point, the reality is, as a city, we will have to, all of us will have to pay for trash service at some point. And so what I would like to focus my energy on is working with our council members and the administration on a more comprehensive solid waste management plan. And so I currently sit on the Solid Waste Management Plan Committee, where we're looking at coming up with a comprehensive solution to address this issue, so it's more equitable and it's fair, and we're looking at sustainable and long-term strategies.
Right, because the landfill is gonna close.
Correct.
So we gotta do some, so you're looking into that, and you're looking at the garbage pickup as, as, and interacting with the landfill closing and...
And things like recycling as well. So those are some of the things that we're looking at currently, and this committee was put in place shortly after the trash fee legislation passed. And so as someone who is a part of focusing on the solution, I thought it was important to stay focused on what we need to do to make this more equitable, so...
All right, thank you very much. You're a young woman, and you've done so much, so many accomplishments, so we're gonna, they have to watch you as you go up in the ladder and see what you're accomplishing in the future, and continues your good success with good health.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dorsey.
Thank you so much.